Good evening, welcome to the school board meeting. It's Monday, August 24th, 2020. Six bucks from Susan, for the last day of order. You set up both of you? Like to call the meetings order and ask each other.
All right, um, bear with me while I pull the agenda up. Hey, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martell.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
We do have a quorum and we'll continue. I will note that this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. Do we, I know we have some community participation because I'd like something to read in. So I'll go ahead and read this first.
Okay.
Community participation is intended to provide for persons to address the board on any matter of concern. Board will hear the insert. If appropriate, will direct administration to respond. For matters in the personnel, it is suggested that concerned parties follow the established chain of command in communication. If matters cannot be resolved, a closed session with the board may be requested in accordance with state statutes.
All right, I have an email from a student, Grace Alderman. Um, she says, "Apologies for the long message, but I was hoping you could share this at the next board meeting. If not, could you please let me know so that I can send it to the board members directly? Thanks." I did forward it to the school board members, but she wanted to also have it read into the record publicly. She said, "To all those in attendance of today's school board meeting, please hear me out. I know I'm just a student, so my say is small compared to all of you higher up, more important people. But I still think this needs to be studied. I speak on behalf of several of my peers who feel the same way. In the event that Wisconsin reverses the mask mandate order like they did the stay-at-home order, is there any chance that Elkhorn would still be able to make masks mandatory for their schools? Masks would help ensure the health and safety for all students and staff. If masks were simply optional and only some people wore them, then masks altogether would be useless. The whole point of utilizing masks is to protect others, not so much as the people wearing them. Even if they were highly recommended, not all people would wear them. Additionally, masks help slow the spread of COVID from person to person. Should one be infected, masks aren't necessarily a 100% prevention method against COVID, but they significantly help." She included a YouTube link, uh, which the board could take a look at, um, if you want it. Although social distancing is a good start, that practice alone would simply not be enough, especially given the fact that Elkhorn schools have so many students enrolled and it may be hard to enforce, especially among younger students. Perhaps a solution to that problem could be to remain learning virtually. I am aware that not all students and staff agree with that, we wear masks for several reasons. One reason might be that masks are uncomfortable and or hard to breathe in for them, especially if they have a pre-existing condition. If this is the case, those individuals should consider trying another type of ring mask. If they find masks in general don't work for them, then they should consider another method of learning such as virtual learning. That way, they remain within the comfort of their own home where they don't have to wear a mask and where no one has to worry about transmitting the virus to from that individual. Another reason might be because they think that masks are unconstitutional. To those people, I ask, what's worse, wearing a mask or wearing a ventilator, fighting to survive COVID? It's better safe than, it's better to be safe than sorry. Why should those individuals choose not to wear masks, have the right to jeopardize everyone's health? When I say everyone, I mean everyone. If a student went home to their family and had the virus, possibly without realizing it, that virus would be passed along to their family and so on. This might pose even more of a threat if it were to be passed on to a family member or a relative who is more at risk. For some students, attending in-person learning during a pandemic isn't a choice. Their parents may both be working and the student may be too young to stay home by themselves. One final reason might be due to political beliefs. People who follow Trump, for instance, may choose not to wear a mask because Trump doesn't support the usage of masks. Politicians are not experts in the field of communicable diseases or viruses. So it would be unwise to choose whether or not to wear a mask based on politics. Instead, people should make their decision based on science proven by scientists and/or doctors. In response to my initial email about this issue, Mr. Telex says, "Please know that you and your peers are why we're here and you're the most important people in the school district." I think that was in reference to my response, uh, that she was talking about that, um, "I'm just a student and not as important as all the higher-ups." Um, but she goes on, "If we want this to remain true, then we need to take every precaution necessary to protect all students and staff who attend Elkhorn. Ultimately, the more precautions you take, the safer things become. The more you add up in terms of prevention methods, the more you can protect yourself and others and the less likely everyone would be to contract the virus. If we ever want to beat this virus, we need to work together and do the right thing. I believe masks should be mandatory for the greater good of all students and staff that attend Elkhorn schools. Thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard at the board, at this board." And Grace Alderman.
We appreciate that input. A discussion of returning schools not on the agenda tonight, so we'll discuss that. Do we have any other community participation? What is, we'll dispense with any more of that and we'll go on to minutes. So we have regular meeting minutes, test your agenda, and I pass out closed session to those of you who are in attendance. Any questions or comments on those? Not hearing any. I guess we'll have to do it separately because we have some closed and they have copies of them. So if someone would like to make a motion for the regular meeting on August 10th?
Um, I move to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 regular session for meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 regular session, the school board meeting as presented. Go call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martell.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I need to look for a motion for the closed session.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 closed session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 closed session, school board meeting as presented. Go call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martell.
Epstein.
Uh, Mrs. Gerald O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Epstein.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion carried. General Other Fund Bills, Mr. Truman.
The General Other Fund Bills this evening covers check number 140541 through 140651, wire transfers 149 through 152, ACH check numbers 016 through 021, options renovation wire number 148, the combined amount of $588,374.62. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the board, the bills in your board packet.
Questions for them?
I just have a couple. Um, I noticed, so there, we had some roof leaks at West Side and the high school. Um, and then we had the roof replacement at the high school that was specific to the pool, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so the leaks at West Side and the high school, was that part of our regular summer maintenance? Or was that something that just kept crept up recently or?
It crept up recently.
Okay.
Around the roof drain. Sometimes the, the flashing kind of spreads out a little bit, so those usually get discovered after a rain start.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, so those were.
It's fairly maintenance kind of things, but we go through what we have. We work with the company, IRS, and they do more detailed analysis. From that, we put together more of a preventative maintenance. Some of those areas will be addressed through roof replacement probably in the next couple of years.
Okay, all right. And, um, then the other question was the Intrado Interactive School Messenger Call System. Is that something that we pay annually or how often?
It is. It is, and that's for our messenger system that we have.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Is it still per student? We used to do per student.
It used to be per student, but I think we, we got to a certain point in number that it's just one fee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, okay. That was all I think.
Any other questions? So I also have a motion.
I move to approve the General and Other Fund Bills of August 24th, 2020, check numbers 140541 to 140651, wire numbers 149 to 152, ACH check numbers 016 to 021, and options renovation wire number 148, in the combined amount of $588,374.62 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moving to second to approve the General and Other Fund Bills of August 24th, 2020, checks number 140541 to 140651, wire numbers 149 to 152, ACH check number 016 to 021, and options renovation wire number 148, combined amount of $588,374.62 as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martell.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Revised overnight travel request for the baseball team.
Thank you. Do you want me just to hang here or?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, I wanted to touch base. Obviously, our 2020 trip was canceled due to everything that was going on, and I appreciate your support, you know, for the last four years that we've been able to go. Um, look, looking forward, and I think we had touched base before, we had chosen the, hey, we'll just apply that to next year. And looking at the calendar, it looked good and it was lining up to spring break. However, since the WIA compressed baseball a little bit, or winter sports and spring sports a little bit, that moved the dates. So we're kind of back in that same situation, if we were able to do this, um, of having to go during a school week. So I wanted to kind of lay that out and also lay out, I don't know in these uncertain times if you would prefer, obviously, you know about it tonight, but maybe reviewing it sometime closer to that date to say, you know, is this possible, not possible? There is some planning that goes into it, but there's no real monetary part to it because we just rolled our money over for the next year. So, yeah, I just wanted to pose that to you, and if you had any questions on that or looking at, you know, I thought we were going to be lined up to spring break again, but unfortunately, we're not.
So the WIA pushed back your start date?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, which means you can't participate, um, in, in games prior to a certain date.
Our season starts the 5th of April.
Okay.
And so you can't compete until that next week.
So then the trip was scheduled for the week before that, right?
It was that 20, week of the 29th, that way it was spring break weekend.
Okay.
So how many days of school would they miss changing this now?
We would miss a week.
A full week?
A full week.
How many, I know you guys did that last time where you missed part of a week, right? Was it a full week or did you miss just part of it?
We were gonna get back Thursday so they could go to school Friday because of how that felt. Because of when we could compete, we could leave a little earlier, start to play a little earlier, but because when you start that week with the 5th, you can't play till the following Tuesday, so then you're kind of locked in to that whole week.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any, is that a week of, um, AP classes or tests and things like that?
It would be the second week of the third trimester, or, no, I'm sorry, second week after spring break, which I believe is the beginning.
What's this, April 11th your departure date? It's April 11th is Sunday, so.
Would not interfere with the.
Okay.
Okay. AP isn't me.
Okay, I guess, you know, as far as that goes, if that's up for the family, if they want to allow their child to participate, and as long as we have staff that are willing to work with the students.
Jason, we're gonna have all the classes recorded, right?
Yeah, unless the virus magically goes period again.
So.
I can have hope. I can hope.
I mean, we're certainly willing, like I said last year, like, we understand that we need to allow time to be like, hey, tonight we're gonna catch up on work at these times or at seven times or.
They, theoretically, yeah, they, assuming we're in the same status as in the fall, they'd be able to attend classes virtually that while they're not playing or in between. The classes will also be recorded.
That's what I meant. If they're recorded, I don't know that they're gonna do it anywhere.
My guess is if we're in this status, we're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
That's true.
Honestly, if we're not much improved, I don't foresee us going anywhere.
Yeah, like if his parents are allowed to call them to the next Monday.
Right.
Career.
Right.
And it's up to the parents.
For any reason, so if that's what they want to do for a reason.
Right.
I just wanted to kind of keep you abreast, but because of that scheduling change and we need to revisit it, I'm, I'm fine with that. I get it. Um, I guess I just wanted some direction.
I am worried about it.
Well, you know, I have no problems approving it, you know, contingent upon what the world was like at that time.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, and I hope we can. I mean, there's so much more, you guys don't, to it than just baseball, like.
Oh, absolutely.
The week together, yeah.
It's hugely important.
The, the problem that we're in is if, you correct me if I'm wrong, John, but if you voluntarily pull out and say, you, you don't get your money back.
Yeah.
If you hold it there and plans that you're going and they have to cancel because of COVID and they'll credit it for future groups.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and the reason we rolled over was by canceling this year, if it was 800 to 1,000, they would have kept. And I guess I wasn't forecasting that thing of 2021, we might, we might still be doing this.
Yeah.
And so I thought, well, why not? Like, yeah, we'd love to go again. It's gonna line up the spring break.
Yeah.
Um, let's just roll it over, keep all our money and.
Right.
A new batch of kids will join the other ones.
Yeah.
But, who knows?
Do you want a motion, Matt?
Is there any, is there any discussion on it? Paul, Danny, anything?
No, I, I think it's pretty much up to the parents and, you know, we can, um, record those things and again, it's, it's in the laps of the students and the, and the coaches then to encourage them to engage. Um, hopefully, they wouldn't fall too far behind with that spring semester, but that's their choices.
Well, we would set aside time, like study time, like specific time, not just, hey, I hope you're studying. We would have, you know, go to a big conference room and sit everybody down and have to do their thing.
Right. I guess that's all you can do, so I don't have a problem.
Jason, is there any discussion on videotaping the booth sessions for AP? Because all the AP classes would be done by then, but it would be the after-school and weekend sessions that the kids would be missing.
Um, the booths?
Yeah. Yes.
I guess we could. I would think that would be simple enough to arrange if there's a booth scheduled that week.
Because don't those start like a month before? So that would be probably around that same time.
They start right away at that term three.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I would also anticipate based on the teacher's comfort level now with video conferencing and talking, that you'll see more of those booths being done digitally and remotely, which means they could.
Sure.
Okay.
Good.
Yes, okay. That, that's my only suggestion.
Nothing else, then, yes. I'll look for a motion.
Okay. I'm moving to approve the revised overnight travel request from the baseball team as presented, contingent on the status of COVID-19 pandemic leading up to their departure date.
Is there a second?
No, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the revised overnight travel request from the baseball team and in the situation with COVID-19 at the time of their departure. Um, so it'd be as modified.
Thank you.
Go call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martell.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Motion carried. Hopefully, we'll go.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's a long time, but, yeah, every week seems to be different. So application to the 2020, 2021 school calendar.
All right, if I bunch this up, Mrs. G just chime in, but the elementary would like to revise the 2020, 2021 calendar to reflect a similar parent-teacher conference times as to what was approved for the 2021, 2022 school calendar. And this is what it would look like for this October. And they'd like, on October 28th, to hold conferences from 4:00 to 7:30. October 29th, from 8:00 to 10:00 and 4:00 to 7:30. And then October 30th would be the non-contract day that's already on the calendar. This would allow them to do 20-minute conferences. They feel like it'd be less rushed and teachers could schedule conferences between 10:00 and 4:00 on the 29th if they wish to do so. Or they could use that time for collaborative planning. Um, the feeling is with the, um, with COVID in light of the, the limited contact of parents in buildings and so forth, structuring your time and more space in that time would allow them to have those one-on-one meetings that are critical.
Questions? I really hear you name, so.
I move to approve the revised 2020, 2021 school calendar.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the revised 2020, 2021 school calendar as proposed. Go call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martell.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Report and discussion items. 2020, 2021 district budget update.
Yeah, this evening, we just wanted to provide you with just a comment in terms of the budget process for 2020, 21, and the sheet that's in your board packet should look somewhat familiar that we've used really since last March, continuing to update. Updates on here are, we've looked it on the bottom of the sheet, they're in green. So at that, the time we were putting the budget together, we were assuming about 40 additional net open enrollment students. We updated that now to about 95. Um, in fact, I think if we talked to Jody today, it's even a little higher than that. Uh, but that's what we're using now in terms of those projections. Um, as a result of that, it's one of the movement with the options program, includes both staff members for options, uh, some additional monies for curriculum and related costs. Uh, looking at the athletic director position and then the school of work opportunities director. So those are kind of built in as proposals, as part of the budget process. The different columns you see there represent different data Wisconsin scenarios for public education. And there's really no new news to report to you tonight. It appears that our legislature will not do a budget repair bill certainly before the election. And if you think about it, by the time of the election, the school districts are required to adopt a budget, certify a tax, finalize revenue cap, basically set our budget. Um, so unless the legislature decides to meet in December, in a normal year, in January, they would start deliberation on a new two-year budget, which would be the 21, 23 budget. So there's no speculation of what changes, if any, would they still make in this year's budget? The opportunity within the per pupil allocation that we get as a categorical aid, and that comes in March, that there's a possibility they could do a reduction then. Or it may be more likely it would be the following year budget. So those are the scenarios that we're kind of looking at. The, going back to the sheet, the column one also builds in if we were to approve, or the board was to approve, a salary adjustment for our employees. As you see, kind of how those numbers calculate out, does show a negative number, but we do have some fund balance we could use. Um, and we have some old head monies, I think we talked about as well, that we could use if needed. The other areas that we haven't built into the budget yet, and you'll see kind of its footnotes at the bottom, is expenses related to COVID. And we've got that calculated about 450 up and right now. Um, that's probably looking at the purposes we're doing upfront along with some supplies. If this goes for the entire school year, it's likely that number would be higher. But we do have some CARES Act funding that would offset part of those as well. So that's kind of the scenarios we're looking at right now. I, I don't think we have really any good indication at the federal level that there's gonna be any additional funding. So right now, I think the CARES one is kind of all we're looking at at this point, so it's still very fluid. Um, but our really next kind of budget detail will be our third Friday count, which I think is the 21st of September. And then finalizing our revenue cap from there and its state aids. Um, I did see the Department of Revenue release valuations for all municipalities. And they went up pretty significantly, over 6%. So they show it by each municipality, but not within the school district, just that portion. So for Elkhorn, it could be different than that, but I still think we're gonna see a pretty good increase. And we assumed about 2%, so I think our tax rate is probably gonna be less than what was approved through the.
Just a quick question, column 1A, what's the assumption on revenue forecasting here?
The difference there really is looking at, um, if you were to do no wage adjustments, but we received $179 state aids.
Okay. That's what I did. Yep.
We, I asked Jody for an update on the open enrollment. I think that in the board notes right now, it's 117. Um, so I guess Jure, it looks like she'll be right in that she said she got it to 2020. Um, and I probably, because her first year started, oh, additional of net and, um, and then last year, I, I believe that was, it was reported in the audit, but I think Bill mentioned fund balance. We were in the black last year in the fund balance, citizens' savings. I don't know if you want to speak to that, though, like, that came in.
Yeah, we, we have a balance probably between $800,000 to $900,000 that we did not spend last year from a variety of sources. Um, part of it was some purchases that we were hoping to do last year, such as the vehicle that ends up getting booked in this year's budget. We also had some late, uh, State of Wisconsin, common school library aids that couldn't get fed, so they're staying in our fund balance. Um, another category is summer school. Because that was a big area. We didn't really spend a lot of monies. Now, on the negative side, is that'll affect our membership in summer school through our revenue cap, so there's gonna be some offset. But still, overall, I think it gives the districts some pushing point. From a budget standpoint.
First reading of revised new policies. All right, um, these are all links to the federal land laws changing at the federal level. We reviewed these with the policy committee and the personnel committee, reviewed them as well as part of that, and what conditions today. Um, how do we best want to, do we just want to click and go through each one or are there specific questions? All right. So, and, and this is just the first reading. A lot of this is just updating the language in regards to uh, who is listed as the coordinator and boilerplate language, again, all recommended from our legal firm on school law that relates to Title IX. Um, and from the policy committee, I, I should share, there should be some updates. We got some different guidance in regards to, you know, who should serve as the recorder and who, or the coordinator, and then who should serve as the investigators and the different delineation and the, the, uh, I don't want to say the lines of order, but with the levels of which you work through, um, from that hearing aspect and through that investigation. Yeah, in a nutshell, the, the board remains um, at a completely impartial level in case there's a grievance at some point where
Right.
gets challenged, the superintendent, I remain further away from that initial line where I hear if there's a disagreement with the investigation or basically that appeal level is what the, um, legal had recommended. The, um, we've identified, I believe, at the, the K5 level and the 612 level, two different individuals to work as those coordinators that would then trigger the investigation likely to be completed, you know, by the principal or the administrator. that would then trigger the investigation likely to be completed, you know, by the principal or the administrator. And HR will also serve and or Bill is that first level of appeal or review. Again, there's a lot of them, but again, there's again revised based upon legal's updated recommendation. On the blue is the new language in each of these. And we do have to state in the actual policy, you can't just list the name, you have to state the actual individual and who they have to respond to. So we did double check on that. So these will.
Jason.
Yes.
Did you go back to legal about the timeframes?
Yes.
You know, like the fifteen days and the thirty days?
Thank you. We have discretion on that. So we can modify those. Those were a very quick timeframe, so we do have discretion on that.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if, I don't believe we modified that, but I do think we should change this. And we did, we did strike some of that.
Yeah, I think some of those did get modified from the personnel committee meetings. So we talked about the policy for, like, for personnel.
So I think those that are on the policy committee that didn't have a chance to review those, I just checked that, make sure you're comfortable with the new timeframe. I mean, it looks like moving from, you know, five to fifteen calendar days. When you look at it, I mean, those go through, you know, by really quick.
No, I noticed some of them were changed. I just wanted to know that that was cleared by legal.
Yeah, it was.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Equal opportunity statements.
And a lot of this language comes straight from legal. He advised the panel.
One of the probably more significant changes in the federal regulations is the required training that people need to go through. So anyone who has a role either as a coordinator or investigator, decision maker or appeal decision maker needs to go through a certain level of training. And the WSB contracted with Boardman and Clark, and it's already created those, so that'll be part of our process as well.
We think Sarah Bosch to be the six twelve, or to be the designated Title IX Coordination Compliance Officer. If they don't have experience, if coming from the student level typically we see or potentially see that more at middle school or middle level. And so likely those staff members would be the ones dealing with or handling that. Updated the language in the handbook, I'm going to put into that if you, again, have a question after reviewing any of these. Again, they're, because they are drafted by legal and they don't fit our typical, and because they have to meet federal requirements, they don't fit our typical policies. I don't think we have my policy that's too preachy. These, these calendar days match the other calendar days it looks like from the prior policy. And then their rest.
And this specifically is not the sexual harassment that, you know, the Title IX.
So any further comment or discussion points from any of the board members or any of the committee members that you'd like to add or review? All right.
All right, recommendations on district administrator personnel?
First of all, we got part of you tonight. We have the retirement of Greg Prince. I want to thank him for all of his years of service after spending thirty-two years as a teacher. He did decide to retire. I know he was going back and forth for quite some time, so. Again, thank him for his service as a PE health teacher. We have the resignation of Christopher Hotseth as a grant program assistant through the College Career Academy. Is why he took a position in Indiana, Indiana and Purdue, if I recall correctly. And so he was working with our youth bill, so that was one of the positions for the youth bill. A resignation of Melissa Decker as a co-activity, hopefully turned for twenty twenty, twenty twenty school year. And then Jennifer Woodward, who's been serving as a blessed aide as late, will not be returning. Like to add the appointment of a high school associate principal, and I do have a name for you this evening. We have offered the position to, and she accepted. And Alan Blair Staver should be joining us from Waterford School, which becomes very highly recommended and was very happy on that. We extended that to her. She served as a special education teacher and a leader in many of their departments. So she should be very ambitious. Wiley Gayheart is a Jackson School Council. I would say both for the associate principal pool, we had an excellent pool of candidates for our school council pool. We were surprised in how strong that candidate pool was as well this time of the year. We're still getting very good candidates coming in. Wiley joins us from Randall and, yeah, I almost told this right. Then we have Kiara, she runs with Kiara, not Sarah, yeah, Kiara. Stilling, she's joining us as a physical education teacher in Jackson. She currently works at Walworth. She's a stilling by marriage. And again, we had a very good pool for our PE position as well.
You heard Dodd.
Uh Dodd, yeah, do I have any guys?
Yeah.
Dodd would be, so Cody, so Greg Prince's position, yeah, I can go through that. Greg Prince's position, high school. Cody Christensen requested a transfer to a high school, which we granted, unless we have a compelling reason not to grant a transfer, we try to accommodate that. And then Dodd Davy requested for the transfer to Tibbetts, and so we granted that position. And then fired him.
So the dominoes fall.
The social studies teacher and the math teacher, I had hoped that we would have decisions for you this evening, that those two are still to be determined, we'll still be working on those. We'll notify you by email when we have those hired before the school year starts. Yes. So if you know anybody that's interested in teaching math through options, you'll, the social studies, let us know. Nicole Alsernowski accepted the position as the high school cheerleading coach. That was not a competitive field, but we want to thank Nicole for taking that role. She'll do a great job in that, and we're excited to have her coaching that position. I think we'll still, we're, we don't have an assistant for her, for me, right?
I have one on the hook.
Okay. And then, as discussed at our last board meeting, we have the transfer for Charlie to serve as the Director of School to Work Opportunities. So transfer from the position at the high schools, the head high school principal. Daniel Van Kill. Excepted the transfer to the role as head principal of the high school. John Handel has been serving as a part-time athletic director assistant for, with five years now. And he is accepted to fill the role as the athletic director full-time. And he also, at his request, would like to stay on and teach AP economics class. And we go from a timing standpoint that he.
Yeah, that would be great.
There's the transfer of Cody Christensen, Dodd Davy, and then Bridget Sherwin requested a transfer to the option science teacher position. So she'll be transferring to that position. And Kelly's plan, with the new structure with the College Career Academy, she plans to not replace that position, but utilize the course pathways of the student-stake group gateway to receive their college credit. Bridget had done a lot of work to align the curriculum to be transcripted credit in many of those courses, but that goes with the teacher. So it being a charter school, Kelly has the flexibility to transfer. Like when a kid takes medical terminology, that counts as a science credit for Gateway, she can't as a science credit for that. Now, if the student is one who's looking at more of a, you know, four-year track type where that higher ed institution wants to see that AP bio or that AP, again, they would have the opportunity to either do that online or to go face-to-face to the high school setting if they wanted to. There, but they wouldn't have had like that AP-type course setting through the career in college academy anyway. Or they could take the equivalent at through Gateway or a higher-level institution. And then Tracy Simons will transfer from her accounts payable position to district account position for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Where is she, where is she going to them? To switch her seat?
Yeah, she's basically her ti- her title and her responsibilities.
But we don't have anyone, it's kind of a large expanding her responsibility range.
It's not a shared position.
Okay. Was that what we thought?
Correct.
Okay, that's my thought.
Wish everyone luck in the new position. Prince, one of my teachers.
We're trying to get having help with coaching fifth grade football.
So looking at the motions.
I move to approve the one, one proposed wage and salary. No, no. Personal recommendation sheet, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening and all reasons.
I'll second it.
It's been moved this second into approve the personal recommendation sheet for August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
And Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Oh, and I, I would know, Mr. Handel would like, I often, for administrative positions, when I should, I like to have them attend as, you know, whether they're paid keys or above, but Mr. Handel wanted to, he wasn't available to come in today. He's helping his dog and his girl. Thanks for that.
I have to kill his face.
All right, so the foundation, I have two guests present this evening. The Kara Foundation has donated twenty-five hundred dollars from the foundation's, the Moon Family Fund, to be used towards the purchase of PPE and supplies. And I really want to thank the Kara Foundation. This is a board member from Wilmot. So we struck up a conversation, we're on the WASB meetings, and Diane Persia, up for school, and she, anyway, she reached out, it was a foundation harassment system, and they were just looking to give some money. So every little bit helps out, so I want to thank them for that. The Jones Dairy Farm has donated fifty cases of sausage, fifty cases of sausage pegs, food service program. Eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I thank them for the sausage. We'll use that in the school lunch book.
Yeah.
I believe, correct? That's the plan.
The plan.
It's been moved this second into approve the generous school gifts of the Kara Foundation and Jones Dairy Farm presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed wage and salary adjustments.
Yeah, Bill and I, we got together and we're looking at this and kind of monitoring. I think when we first, and I think it was the right decision, not knowing what the state budget situation was going to be. And we had received, I mean, Bill has budgeted, you know, the different scenarios that had been recommended to look at. To be frank, I, I didn't think we would be sitting in a position where we have the projected net open enrollment that we do with everyone else having, you know, starting their online programs and so forth. I didn't envision us getting very many online students, to be frank. So there's a number of factors in what we've seen. This, this is probably three, almost four weeks old now, that at that point, seventy-one percent of the school districts in the state had moved forward with salary increases. And as we kind of outlined now, again, that fund balance, as Bill noted, is tied up in some purchases. So it's not like a true in the black by that eight hundred thousand. But with that and the open enrollment growth that we have, we're recommending move forward with the one-point-five wage increase, which we originally budgeted for also now.
Questions?
I move to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed wage and salary adjustments as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved this second into approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one proposed wage and salary adjustments as presented.
Yeah, I just add one more piece to this. I know that, you know, people look around and stuff, they may see there's other districts in our region that had more significant pay increases. But when we look at total package, our health insurance increased by ten-point-five percent. So I realize one-point-five percent isn't, it's below what CPI was. And you have districts like Wilmot that gave over a three percent rate, but, you know, their health insurance only went up like four percent last year or something like. So it is, we did cover, the district did the ten-point-five percent health insurance increase for the year. So whole package, it ends up being a decent increase. Sorry to interject, I just wanted to.
No, thanks for, thanks for reminding us of that. No, thanks for, thanks for reminding us of that.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get emotional, but I think everybody saw the passing of Officer Patrick very unexpectedly. Yeah, it's been a hard week. Sometimes you don't realize how much an individual means to the community, how many lives they've touched until portion of you lose them. His services will be this Thursday in the high school gym, and our thoughts go out to his family. I did share earlier that we had 713 open enrollment in. At this point last year, we ended with by 96. We always pick up more throughout the school year. And then we talked about the position that was offered to Ellen Blair Staver. I do want to find out that this week, I haven't seen the new chart from Gateway. They always send this to us in a certificate, but for the 2019, 2020 school year, and this is down, last year we were over $500,000 in savings. But with COVID, a lot of families and/or students didn't finish out that third trimester that had an impact. But in the Gateway area, Elkhorn, and this isn't accounting for per pupil, this is just straight dollar amount, which generally were, you know, were not, by, by far, were not the largest high school in the area. But Elkhorn had by far the largest amount of tuition savings for students due to transcripted credits. And that's just including the high school, if you factor in the alternative high school as well that had another $36,000 for that sum. In total, almost $400,000 in tuition savings from the Elkhorn preschool. That's all I have for you now.
We can do a closed session, saving, so looking for.
I move to adjourn to the closed session pursuant to Ms. Jackson's statute. 19.85 for a warrant for a C to the staff member contract. The school board will not reconvene in open session.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn a closed session pursuant to what they said to an ex-employee, 51C. The district's staff members' contract, the school board will not reconvene in open session.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
And Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.